Point town plan commission please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand to the pledge of the flag?
I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll let the records reflect the members that are present. Members should have received the draft minutes of August 27, 2018. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I didn't notice any.
No, sir.
And I'll entertain.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the draft minutes, August 27, 2018, sitting by saying aye?
Aye.
Poo's, nanos, thank you. The allegations and action items for this evening. BZA hearing, 2018-206 Brewery Fire, Microbrewery at 4337 O'Tonnytown Road. Recommendation to the Board of Appeals, hearing scheduled for October 17, 2018 at 7:30. Jim, would you start us off on that, please?
Sure, as is our practice and now requirement, any pending special exception or variance is going to come before this board for comment and recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. With regard to this particular case, the use of the property as a microbrewery is a special exception for both downtown business and general business. It's not specifically called out in general business, but it's lumped in under all permitted business in downtown. So, at any rate, the applicant will have to meet the usual eight criteria with the Board of Zoning Appeals, things like ingress egress, noise, light, impact on surrounding properties, character in comparison with other properties in the district, and so on. And we felt like it worked out rather well last month to have the applicant actually present a little bit of a summary of their intended use of the property. And so this evening, we have Dave Palmer with us, who's one of the brewery guys, and he's going to provide a little overview of what they're going to be doing at the site. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Thanks, sir. Evening, everyone.
Evening.
So I'm just going to go through a few slides, kind of show you a little bit about the industry in Maryland and our potential for product.
Can you start out by telling us a little bit about yourself, your company, the representatives from your company?
Absolutely.
Is it private owned, or?
So we're an LLC, myself and my business partner Jesse Johnson. Jesse couldn't be here tonight. We had two events scheduled on the same night, so the benefit of having a partner is we can be in two places at the same time. So I'm here just to walk through what we intend to do. We started our LLC in early 2016. Since then, we've been dedicated to finding a home in Carroll County. We're both Carroll County residents, Jesse's in Manchester, born and raised. I'm in Westminster, and I've been there about 10 years. We've been searching for properties owned, properties in the municipalities for the last year or more. And when, at the recommendation of other business owners in the area, they said, hey, why not check out Tonnytown? And we did, and we're very happy with what we've seen here, and decided to try to move forward here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, kind of as a summary, we intend to be a three-barrel brewery system, which three-barrels is approximately 92 and a half gallons. That's the capacity that we can brew at a given time. We would have a tasting room. We are already partnering with agriculture in Carroll County. Every time we brew beer, we give our spent grain to a dairy farm in New Windsor, and they're able to feed their sheep with materials that we use. We're very community-driven. We want to be a place that is open to those residents and family-friendly and just focus to drive that forward. You can see that this industry's been growing pretty substantially in Maryland and in Southern Pennsylvania. This isn't even a comprehensive list, this is just what I could fit on one screen. We haven't had a brewery open in Carroll County in almost nine years. The zoning in particular has been a real hurdle for that, but Jesse and I are hoping to see that change by opening here in Tonnytown. That's kind of a visual representation of where the nearby breweries are. It's a little difficult to see on the white screen, but you can see Tonnytown is kind of in this hole where there are no breweries for many miles in any direction. Maryland craft beer is a huge industry for the state. There's thousands of jobs, millions of dollars in economic impact, millions of gallons of beer produced. We would expect in Tonnytown, for at least starting out, that it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars of economic impact for the region, somewhere between four and 10 jobs and under 10,000 gallons of beer produced. Sort of the overflow of how this will affect other industries, we mentioned feeding the sheep, but it's also hops and other agricultural products that we can resource locally, so nearby farmers would be able to produce ingredients for our business. Likewise, food trucks could sell their wares in our parking lots at special events, and nearby restaurants and so forth. The benefit from the beer tourism industry that people from our county presently are driving to Frederick, they're driving to Havre, they're driving to Baltimore, and they're spending their hard-earned money somewhere else, we'd like to keep that in account. So are there any exceptions for us for the zoning? Well, Jesse and I just recently won the Carroll Biz Challenge. We've been doing these events with the Brew Association of Maryland, of which we are a member, and at those events, we've served our beer to thousands of people who've tasted it, doing great reviews. You can see when you compare the reviews that we've received to the two biggest guys in the state, our reviews line up very similarly with theirs. This is a, for demonstration only, we haven't contracted an engineer or architect yet, but this is a modification of the existing site drawing showing our intended use. There toward the bottom of the screen, we have the brewing area, office and dry storage. In the center is the seating area for customers. And then toward the top is a tasting bar and a small walk-in cooler. And then up above the building is an intended outdoor beer garden. Below the building is outdoor propane and CO2 tanks and an outdoor walk-in cooler. There's an existing wheelchair ramp in between the beer garden and brewery, as well as two ADA compliant restrooms currently in the building. And another industry perk that we will have there is beer-to-go. They have made some really cool advancements in the technology behind that. So if you're not coming out to sit down and have a pint, you can come in, get a 32-ounce can filled, sealed, and leave with it. And then, again, there's the drawing, sort of a graphical representation of how we'd like to see it laid out. And that sums up what I've got, so I'm open to any questions you all may have.
Are you going to have any food?
No, sir. We are going to rely on the kitchen at Thunderhead for folks to be able to walk next door and get food there. Likewise, food trucks or any other nearby, it's sort of, instead of a BYOB place, it's a BYO-off place, so you bring your food in, but we just provide the beer.
How will this work out with Carroll County?
In what way?
With your license?
So with Carroll County...
Don't you have to have food?
No, you don't. Pub Dog has just gone through the process at their tasting room in Westminster. They are tasting room only, and they bring in food trucks, catering, and so forth for special events, but they don't have food sales. I think, I don't even know if they have packaged goods, they might, but they don't have...
You'll have tasting times?
Our business hours, I believe the county requires 40 hours a week, so we would have primarily weekend hours for the tastings, but to kind of fill in the gaps to reach 40, we would also offer some tastings during weekdays while brewing.
How many people will this building hold?
I'm not sure of the exact capacity. It'll all kind of depend on parking and so forth, but we anticipate between 15 and 75.
A day. A day, that's a day, right?
That would be the capacity. I don't know how many customers or anything.
Yeah, I thought it said somewhere there was a day. Yeah, I thought there was a note about that. So you're going to have any live entertainment?
We intend to, but a lot will depend on what special improvements are required for that. You know, maybe the occasional guy with a guitar kind of thing, I think, over the top.
Just thinking about with speakers and with a development right behind it, as far as the noise level.
Sure. And I know there's a decent amount of trees between, but you know, if a fence to keep the noise out would be required, you know, be willing to do that in our life.
What effect do you think your business would have on the other businesses around yours, like the Flick Pub and Tony's Cafe? I mean, they sell food, but they also have alcohol.
Yeah, I mean, this model pops up next to restaurants all the time, and the restaurants do fine, because it's a completely different model. Most people that attend the brewery tasting room are just there for, you know, either do a flight of small samples and maybe get some beer to go and move on. It's not really a night-out dining kind of experience. We like to have the food option if people want to stick around, but it's not really geared the same way.
Okay, what about, is there going to be any connection? Well, I know the building is connected or curved, but is there a passageway that goes from your business into the bowling alley?
That's something Mark and I discussed, but it's, nothing's in stone at the moment.
Okay, I just wonder what issues that would be if the bowlers would be carrying their drinks into the bowling alley. I'm not sure if they can have their...
They don't allow, they don't allow, only one place to drink it, the bowling alley. Says beer cannot be removed from this room.
Okay. Just identify yourself.
Okay, my name's Mark Kraus, property owner and manager, Thunderhead Bowling Center.
Okay, good, okay, good. Come to the mic, please, so we can... I mean...
There you go.
Yes, Mark Kraus, Thunderhead Bowl, property owner and manager. We've explored this with the bowling industry. This is my second time through with this center. I had it till, from 2000 to 2008, sold it, and then decided to come back, and I've been back about five years now. The bowling industry's changed a lot, and one of the things that was interesting to us about this proposal was the fact that bowling in and of itself doesn't really exist the way it used to. We want people to come out for events, so to address your question with other restaurants, venues, things like that, I think it only helps. I don't feel any threat with us losing beer sales or anything like that. I think it's going to bring more people to the area. So I think it's something that would really benefit everyone, but I can't speak for the other business owners. And as far as the beer and wine, we are under, currently under, we have our beer and wine license.
But with your license, isn't it required that you have, that 40% of your sales has to be food?
Yes, yes.
And yet they can manufacture a drink without any limitations on...
I know the other microbreweries, like I'm in Hartford County, Independent Brewery did that, where they bring in the trucks, the food trucks, because of the requirements, and the hurdles they run into with the health department trying to get a brewery open, because it's a much bigger nut to crack if you're trying to run a restaurant and a brewery.
Detour has food.
But we, you know, like I said, we have to, I don't know, other than what we've discussed, I don't know what hurdles, if we did have a walkthrough, so they could get to the bowling center to get the food. We don't have any problem with them bringing the food trucks in there. I don't think it's going to negatively impact our food sales, because that's what's really been growing in our center, is the restaurant side of the business.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
George, you had a question?
Well, Detour has food, I know. The winery out there, you know. Are you aware that the Board of Appeals just recently turned down the package store coming to town?
I heard that.
You're not aware of it?
No, I know, I heard. I think it's a different model than...
Pardon?
I think what we're doing is a different model from a package store, and I didn't...
Well, they're cousins though, aren't they? Might not be twin brothers or anything.
Yeah, I mean, it's a similar, I mean, it's the same umbrella in the industry, but it's a very different model for how the dollars are generated and what's, you know, what the impact is.
What age group would be coming to your brewery?
It's typically people, I'd say the average age is probably low thirties. It's usually working professionals. I mean, craft beer in and of itself is not a cheap commodity, so it's usually people that are able to spend a little bit more that go out, so it's, you know, more working professional age.
When you're brewing, I'm not that familiar with, I'm not familiar, period, with alcohol products, but when you're making this or brewing this or manufacturing this, is there any odor or smell that would go, that you would be exhausting outside?
It would vent out. It smells very, the smell that comes out is very similar to baking bread. It's not an unpleasant odor. It's just the smell of the barley being almost steep like tea. The barley is crushed and then put in about 155-degree water, and then that aroma comes out, and it smells a lot like baking bread.
And that's vented outside?
That would be vented outside, yes, for about two hours, three days a week.
What is the main outlet for your product? Is it going to be more wholesale, more just people coming to your location?
For the first year, we anticipate tasting room sales and beer-to-go from the tasting room to be our primary outlet. We're going to have very limited self-distribution to other restaurants in the county and some further out into Frederick and Baltimore. But as we're able to expand, we would look into a canning line and Maryland distribution, and then from there, East Coast distribution.
So you're going from retail to wholesale then?
I'm sorry?
You're doing resale and then wholesale?
We would grow into wholesale. There's not much wholesale that we could do at the level that we intend to start.
Would this space permit you to ultimately do wholesale, to produce enough beverage that you could store it and ship it out? Are you going to be coming back in a year looking for a bigger space?
I've had some conversations about how to expand. I don't know if you want to address that question, but I don't want to speak for you on that.
That's fine.
But we've talked about ways to expand this property.
Again, Mark Kraus, Thunderhead Bowl. Yeah, we have, it's 2,600 square feet in that building.
Right.
I think there will be some storage capability there. Also, at Thunderhead Bowl, we're 26,000 square feet. We have a lot of, I'm trying to think of the word to use, based on where the business leads us, we could take some lanes out, put some more storage in. I may take four of the duckpin lanes out anyway, to do other things with bowling, because it's, like I said, it's coming more of an event. We can't just pull people to Thunderhead from Westminster to bowl. There has to be other things that draw them there, whether it be video games, birthday parties, corporate events, things like that. We're changing, we can't make it on leagues. I think about 35% of our business is leagues right now. The rest is what I call gimmick ballings, globos, birthday parties, things like that. We also acquired, I'm in a partnership with the property next door, which is another four acres, that is commercial, and we haven't done anything with that yet. So I think moving forward, we'll have options. And a lot of it depends on how fast they grow, if they make it, not to put a negative thing on there, but it is, it is something you have to look at, so.
Okay.
But we're not going into this blindly as, you know, partners or anything like that, business partners, so.
Are there any inherent dangers to microbrewing, things that you have to address? Sprinkler systems, anything like that?
There's a sprinkler system existing in the property, but as the only flammable element that we're dealing with is the propane itself, all we need to put in is a range hood that's up to go.
Okay.
So we already have quotes for that from a couple different vendors.
Okay, I assume health inspections regularly for you or anything like that from the county?
Maybe it's less than the food industry, but there are some.
There are some, okay.
Is there any pressurized vessels?
The only pressurized vessels that we're going to have are going to be kegs, and they're rated up above 60 PSI, and we'll be pressurizing them to about 12. So there's no real danger unless there's some sort of valve malfunction, and even then it's going to be in a contained space.
Didn't you say, how hot your heat in the water?
It will eventually boil.
So you've got steam?
Yeah, which is also vented out, but it's not pressurized steam.
Okay.
There's that exhaust stack that comes out of the main boiler that vents directly out some.
In what quantities will you package your product?
Sorry?
What quantities will you package your product?
Primarily, it'll be in 15-gallon and 5-gallon kegs. The 15-gallon kegs we serve is on-site, 5-gallons would be for distribution and events.
No bottles?
The only thing similar to that would be the cans-to-go, the 32-ounce cans that are single-fill, that's on a canning line, just fill one, and then the machine seals it.
Not in cases?
No, sir. They make a three-pack holder for those cans, we might do like a, you know, maybe each can would only be $10, then you buy three, you can save a buck each, that sort of thing, but for the most part, it'll be single sales.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm interested in this.
Any, any comments from the floor?
I suggest we make a favorable recommendation to the BZA. If you'd like that in a forum motion, I'll make that.
I'll second that.
Okay. And we'll have any further discussion?
I can't wait to hear you start.
You're a little bit above the age that they were mentioning.
Yeah, but still good.
He'll make adjustments a little bit.
It's all good.
Not hearing any more questions. Motion was made to give a favorable, favorable motion for the Brewery Fire, Microbrewery. So all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who poo's, gin nanos, thank you. Thank you. Jim, they don't come back to us anymore on this, do they? They won't be coming back to us for anything else, right?
That'll be dependent on what their...
Could you folks hold on a moment? If I could get you guys to wait a moment? Just hold on a second, please.
Based on the application that we've seen thus far, and the limited amount of improvements exterior to the building, you know, with just having the propane tank and CO2 and walking cooler, I don't think this is going to trigger the site plan, so they most likely will not be back before you, assuming, assuming the special exception is granted. This will be something that we should be able just to address administratively, unless they come back with some need to expand the building or expand parking or something like that. I don't really foresee that, because I would imagine there will be an opportunity, parking-wise, to, you know, park throughout the site as needed, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the parking area there. I don't see there being any likely parking capacity issues or anything like that, so unless something comes up as they're working through the process that shows that they need a building addition or something like that, it should just be a matter of issuing the zoning certificate and making sure all the building codes and plumbing codes are followed through the county.
Okay, I guess my only concern was not seeing the site plan other than here, is maybe the lighting and their outside gardening?
And those are things that the BZA will look at as well, in terms of, you know, consideration of noise and lighting on adjacent properties and things like that. And that's also something that even without a site plan, when somebody comes in for a commercial, for a new business zoning certificate, any changes relative to the building or the site are questions that I ask also. So if somebody is proposing, you know, new lighting, I'm going to make sure that it's full cutoff lighting and things like that, so it's not going to create any adverse impact on the neighbors. More often than not, though, situation like this, well, not that we've had a lot of breweries come through, but when somebody's moving into a new, an existing space with a new business, if there's not a big change in the impact or the intensity of the business, usually it's just a simple zoning certificate. And again, if somebody's proposing signage, there are regulations that we need to follow with that, and I do always inquire about lighting and things as well, so. But those are also things that the Board of Appeals will be looking at in terms of their criteria for the special exception.
I was hoping we would get to see at least a modified site plan on it, because I'm more concerned with their neighbors. I mean, the issues that we had with the storage facility out there, the lighting, the neighbors, I mean, we had something in force there, we had a site plan. Here, I don't know if we'd really consider this a site plan, and I wouldn't be against doing a modified site plan based on your recommendations.
Well, rather than, rather than going through the whole site plan process, I'm sure we could come to some agreement of giving you guys the opportunity to see the full, the final layout plan before it's approved, and, you know, get your suggestions on it without actually going through the time and expense of the site plan process.
Wouldn't want to drag this out, there's just a lot of expense, but how does the rest of the commission feel?
I feel the same way.
I'm not that concerned about that, actually. I'm not concerned about it.
I am not concerned.
I am.
Well, I think we can, I'm sure we can work the timing out so that we can do sort of a courtesy review sort of thing. We'll, we'll, we'll all be in touch on it when we get a little closer to that.
Actually, before we voted, I should have went back. Does the county have any comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming back. I guess we'll move right into your report, Jim.
Not a whole lot for you this evening. I did want to give you a quick update on the Tannery Barn, and I'm guessing anybody who's headed down Frederick Street has probably seen the pavilion addition we talked about last month is well underway. As mentioned last month, it was, you know, initially covered under a residential building permit. I did touch base with the Permits and Inspections Bureau at the county, and as of last week, they, the Tannery Barn folks have not submitted application for a change of use to commercial. So we are trying to stay on top of that and make sure that, that they do not begin hosting events until they've gone through that process. So we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, waiting for them to come in and make application to the county to convert the property to the event venue, but that is still, that has yet to happen. So we're, as I said, we're trying to keep an eye on it and make sure that they are following all the applicable building codes and plumbing codes to do that event venue, and the county is well aware as well that, that they will be coming back, so.
And they are following the commercial code?
Correct.
Not residential?
And that, that is, that is something that has been made very clear to them, both from myself and folks at the Bureau of Permits and Inspections, that, that permits have been issued under residential, but that anything they are doing will have to be brought up to commercial code before they can get a use and occupancy for the event venue. So as I said, we're kind of waiting for them to make the next move.
If I can ask, what was the point of us even looking at a site plan? I mean, I feel like we wasted a lot of our time and listened to a lot of untruths to pass this site plan that they basically shredded and did whatever they wanted to anyway. Can you speak to that at all? Should they have, should they have gone commercial before they even came to us if we were approving a commercial site plan?
We could have, we could have gone that route, yes. I think that the project certainly evolved as it was coming before you, and I think this is a situation where trying to be accommodating to a new business wanting to locate in the city, we certainly bent over backwards on this one to try to get them through the process and let them get... we certainly bent over backwards on this one, to try to get them through the process, and let them get up and running. But this is an instance where it looks like, um, we worked to get them through the process, and we're not seeing the continued, uh, motion on it, in terms of, you know, the, the.
Cooperation?
The, the renovations needed to make it commercial, to make it viable as a commercial structure. And, and we know that, that it's very expensive to do that, that conversion, um, but I, I'm not sure how they, um, I'm not sure what their next step is going to be, um, in terms of what, what piece they apply for first. But it seems like we're dealing with, um, probably somewhat limited budget, and that they're just trying to bite off one little piece at a time. But I, but I don't know that the, you know, I think we certainly bent over backwards to get them through the process, but they had a moving target, you know, as that process went on.
Well, you can't tell me that they just decided all of a sudden to put in this, um, what did you refer to it as? The pavilion. I mean, that was not a spur of the moment, hey, let's do this instead. There's, there's no way. I mean, that was known, and it was, I believe, purposely withheld. So, we gave them a lot of benefits of the doubt, that I feel we were not led properly on.
That's why we need to make sure things aren't brought up before you knows. The last couple of our projects that we've been involved in, I think there's the corners was cut, and there's things, uncompleted items on their agendas, that has not been completed yet, yet the facilities are still being used as they were supposed to have been completed.
I don't believe they had a clear-cut, solid plan to start with, and as they're doing things, other things pop up, and they're putting it into their plan.
Well, I kinda agree, but that's.
I think it's coming along peacefully.
So, moving on.
Meads Crossing, actually, Steve Smith from Meads was, was in this afternoon, we had a meeting, we talked a lot about the, uh, the railroad crossing and the, uh, construction thus far. So, the, the, the crossing continues to be a bit of a thorn in the side, um, and, uh, there's, have been some new developments with regard to, um, how much, I guess, right the railroad has, and, you know, aspects of the underlying property ownership and such. So, it looks as though the ball really is that, that Meads and the city should be able to have more say in the process than the railroad. And there's gonna be a lot of back and forth, and I know Jay and, uh, Meads attorney will be working with the railroad, going forward to try to iron some of that out. So, um, they are moving ahead, um, and a couple little tidbits from this afternoon's meeting. Hoping that the railroad crossing is gonna be in by December, and, um, let's see. And hopefully, yeah, hopefully Ryan will still be able to get some, some housing starts, assuming that that crossing gets in, and we're gonna have a, a reasonable way to get in and out of the project. So, um, they are moving forward, Steve Smith has been working behind the scenes on the railroad crossing, to try to, um, kind of break loose the logjam with the railroad there, so, um, they are chugging ahead. And of course, we, we still have the pending zoning certificates for the model homes from Ryan Homes there. But of course, we can't issue those, because the gravel bed for the road is not in place yet. And the last thing on Meads is that, um, water lines have been tested, and, and, um, you know, they're, that worked well, so their, um, infrastructure is coming along very nicely. So, um, moving on to Meadowbrook, we did have some weather-related issues out there, particularly with a manhole that was, uh, had some flooding during one of our heavy rains, and, uh, that was, that was rectified, but it did cause some issues, um, over the weekend, when we had some rains. And, um, that's really about it, other than the idea of, of the downtown business text amendment, we talked about last month. There have been some recent developments with regard to the BZA case for the liquor store, and, um, it looks like that may, there are gonna be continuing conversations with regard to that use at the site. So, at this point, we didn't work to introduce a text amendment with regard to a drive-through, since we really were trying to do something that would be kind of limited for a site, if not this one, one very similar to it. And, um, at this point, that's kind of in a holding pattern right now, so, you may be hearing more about the liquor store at that location in the future. But also with regard to downtown business, if we have a chance, uh, wouldn't mind talking about the intent section of that, that, um, district. Councilman Wans brought up, I think, a very good point, a couple months ago, when we were talking about the Tannery Barn, actually, about all these different uses that are permitted in the district that don't really gel with the intent of the district.
Right.
And, um, I think that's something that we should talk about a bit, before we really get into, uh, more about the specific uses, or any details, is, I, I think that intent section is dated, I think it's outdated, actually. And, um, I think that's where we could focus some effort, or some discussion, before we get into, like, talking about specific uses, is really, you know, what's, what is that district supposed to be? You know, what can it be that's gonna benefit the city and the businesses? And, you know, hopefully not create a lot of additional traffic headaches, or noise for the people who do live downtown, and things like that. And I think that that intent section just really needs a lot of attention, so. But that's, that's it for my report, I guess. So, unless we wanna get right into that kind of discussion, or we can. I don't really have much more in the way of updates on the other, um, construction projects.
Okay, so, there, there's the rest of the projects that's listed here. There's something withholding on all these, why we're still having them listed, right?
Yes. Well, Meadowbrook is still under construction, and, um, they, they still have thirteen lots in Section Four, and they have not pulled any permits for Section Five, they're not quite, they're not at that point yet for Section Five, but the infrastructure construction is underway. Creekside has a punch list that the Department of Public Works gave them after the last walkthrough, last inspection they did. So, we're waiting for Creekside to take care of those items, before we, um, do the closeout process, and release what's left of their surety, and switch it, or switch it to a maintenance bond. Carroll Vista is just a matter of, of paperwork at this point. We still have, um, you might recall that, well, this, this was more a council thing than a planning commission thing, but additional EDUs were reserved for Carroll Vista Phase Four. They were reserved, we reserved ten more EDUs than they needed for the approved plan. But knowing that the plan had gone, gone through a couple iterations, I think they wanted to make sure they had water available, in the event they wanted to come back and add more duplexes, or semi-detached, or something like that. But now they're built out, so we need to take care of the administrative end of that, and basically take those EDUs off of the res- the reservation list for water, and, um, make sure that we have, actually, I'm sure we already have the as-bills for it. So, really, it's just addressing the, the water piece, and the admin end. Some of the others are on here, just because they're, um, they have not really initiated the closeout process.
What sheets on there for?
We are still holding, um, escrow money, and I'm not sure if we have construction surety in hand as well on that. Same thing with EVAPCO. George's Zone York still has some admin stuff outstanding. Yep, we'll talk in the next couple days. And, of course, we already talked about Meads and Tannery. So, I guess for, for most of those, it's more, more paperwork than anything.
Okay. Is that it for Jim? Jay?
Just wanna kind of flesh out what Jim was talking about, about the old Sheets building and the BZA case. We've been contacted by an attorney after the hearing, who stated that, um, obviously, the applicants were unhappy with the result of the hearing turning down the special exception. And, uh, they were considering appealing the matter to circuit court, which is something they could do, or filing a motion for reconsideration to the board, and saying, hey, you, we understand that you didn't rule in our favor, and here's the reasons why you said you didn't rule in our favor. Would you reconsider this application, if we could provide you a different, additional information? And the written opinion for the board was the fact that they really didn't provide any operational details. The person who was testifying was the property owner, not the person who was going to be running the store and could give details, so, if we receive the motion, 'cause we haven't received it yet, if we receive that, it'll be, it'll be discussed by the Board of Zoning Appeals at their next hearing. And they're having a hearing on this brewery thing. And so, it'll be another item of business where they'll discuss whether or not to reconsider the case. And if they grant the motion to reconsider the case, then another hearing will be set, where they'll take more testimony, and then can come up with a decision to either reaffirm the case, or do something different. So, that's why it's not done yet. And with it not being done, the thought would be, we don't wanna mess with the zoning ordinance, and create another issue at the same time. That's all I have on that.
Clara, from the county?
Well, I have a couple things. Anyone who's following the Freedom Plan, that will, um, the public hearing, sorry, is being held on October third at the South Carroll Senior Center. And I'm not sure of the time, I think it's seven eighty-six, I believe that, believe that. Just an update on the conference resuming, commercial industrial and, and employment campus is going before, the tax is going before the county commissioners, um, in November. And I sent it to Jim, the Planning Commissioners Training, um, in Gaithersburg, in Oct- on, um, October twenty-fifth, and there's another session on the twenty-sixth. I sent him the website that everyone can register, and it's solid information, so, for anyone who's interested. I think some of Carroll County Planning Commissioners will be there, so, I, I think it's probably a, I mean, of course, if you're new to Planning Commissioners, or if you just need a refresher, or whatever it might be.
Jim, you gonna follow up on that, then, or do you, should we go ahead and apply ourselves? Rather have you handle it.
Is that an update, or, uh, I mean, we've already, uh, pay a stat.
This is something I was gonna bring up before we.
Okay.
Before we adjourn, that, um, the Maryland Planner, Planning Commissioners Association Annual Conference is coming up, October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. It's in Gaithersburg this year, and we do have some money in the Planning Commission budget, if, if anyone is interested in attending that, that training. And embedded in that conference is, as they do every year, the, um, commission, board and commission member training that the state provides, um, so you can take the online class, or you can take the, um, take it in person at one of these sessions. They typically offer it, um, you know, a few times through the year, at the Planning Commissioners Association, at, um, Mako, or MML, things like that. I think everyone sitting here currently has already taken the training. But certainly, if you'd like to sit through it again as a refresher, you know, um, you can sign up just for the training as well, if you don't wanna go to the whole conference. But that's something, I'm, I'm guessing you probably all have received emails from, um, the Planning Commissioners Association on it. But I did wanna make sure that you knew that we do have some money in the budget, if somebody is interested in going to that training this year. So, if, um, if anybody's interested, you know, get in touch with me, and I can make reservations for you, or, you know, sign you up, so.
Are you going?
I am not gonna go this year.
I mean, George and I have been to, what, two of them, three of them?
Yeah.
They're very good.
Well, we've had the training.
Yeah, but there's other things besides the training.
Training course.
Yeah, there's other things besides the training.
Yeah, right, I'd sooner go to them.
Right. Okay. Was that it, Clara?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we wanna nicely move into your other part.
Okay, so. Downtown business.
Downtown business.
So, the intent currently reads, "The purpose and intent of this district is to provide logical locations for retail services needed by neighborhood populations. The permitted uses, use should generate low" "vehicular traffic with minimum vehicular parking needs, and create few objectionable influences for nearby neighbors. It is intended that such uses and services shall not include any manufacturing and production by powered machine, or wholesale distribution facilities, services, or storage areas, or incorporate any improvements, displays, or activities that compromise public safety." So, that's, that's the intent, and it's really the first, uh, the first couple sentences that I guess I'm not real happy with. I, I, I don't think it really speaks to the idea that, I know our Main Street Board has been trying to, um, you know, one of their intents is that the downtown become a destination place. And, um, you know, someplace for logical locations for services needed by neighborhood populations doesn't really fit that bill. We want people to, you know, come in from, throughout the city and the surrounding area, and patronize our downtown. And I don't think that that's what this intent section really describes.
Maybe we should have the brewery and the creamery. We bring the people downtown.
It, it very well may, I think, I think that would probably, um, put quite a divot in their startup budget, to try to bring that building back. But, but things like that, I mean, you can, you know, I don't know how many of you have been inside the creamery, but, um, you know, any, I, well, I actually was away this weekend for a little getaway, and we went to a, um, a brewing company that was a pub, and old industrial building, it was an old warehouse building, exposed brick every place, you know, warehouse doors, and, you know, things don't have to be fitted out with sheet rock, and, and, you know, the level of fit and finish of this building necessarily, to make it viable for some other use, so. Yeah, I mean, you could see something like that in a building like that. But, you know, that, that's the sort of thing that could fit downtown. You know, I, I understand we, we have some parking challenges, mostly perception of parking, I think more than an actual scarcity of parking. And I think that that's what the, the language about, you know, low traffic was probably intended to speak to, was that, you know, we don't wanna create, um, you know, more demand for vehicular parking than we have, um, space for. But again, you know, we want people to come into the downtown, and spend some time, and, and patronize our businesses downtown. And, um, you know, I, the idea that you may not need to have, um, vehicular parking on-site is something that we need to think about, because we do have public parking downtown that, you know, we don't have elsewhere. We have private parking, like at the shopping center, it's private property deemed open to the public. Downtown, we have actual public parking lots. So, I, I think we really need. So, I, I think we really need to kind of revamp that statement a little bit. So-
Does revamping the statement actually fix any issues?
I think it can fix what now is sort of a disconnect between the intent and the list of businesses. I think when, and again, I, I don't mean to dwell on the Tannery Barn, but that's when the idea kind of came up a few months ago was an assembly hall, which is a permitted use, certainly will generate traffic and a substantial amount at a peak period, you know? So, a lot of trips to and a lot of trips from, from, you know, just like a movie theater. When the film is over, you know, there's a, a surge of traffic in and out for the next time. And, um, you know, that doesn't really fit with the intent section.
What if the intent section isn't the problem? It's the permitted uses that may be the problem.
And that's, that's a possibility as well. But I guess it comes down to what do you envision the downtown being?
Didn't the Lions Club just recently, last month, present a proposal or a long-term proposal to do some improvements in the town, which would include the creamery? And should that develop into something, can't all this work in together? Improvements of downtown and the creamery area? Why can't this all go together if they really take on this project and work something out in the next five years or so?
That, that would be the way we would all love to see it happen.
Did anything come out of that at all? It was a proposal that was made or it's just a talking point, a discussion.
At, yeah, at this point, it's just the idea's been floated.
Right, exactly.
Nobody's said, "We hate it."
Well, I think it's gonna happen, but it's gonna take time.
And it's gonna take a lot of conversations.
Exactly, and isn't that the time when all this stuff should meld together and do something? I mean, I'm thinking that that's when a lot of things should happen. If they really take this on and do it. It's a great plan.
That's why they were trying to get a partnership with the town.
That's right, uh, the, the whole thing would go together.
That's the only way they're gonna get it is get a partnership with the town.
That's exactly right.
The town will put so many restrictions on them, they won't get it any other way.
It's a wonderful idea that they proposed. I mean, it's only a proposal, it's, it's a, a thought.
It's a wonderful thought.
It's a wonderful thought.
Get somebody to sign partnership to, somebody with funds.
And I think it will go if the two get together.
Well, certainly, the, the redevelopment of that site would be a big plus for the downtown area. You know, the, the site is only about an acre.
Parking was involved there too. Parking was involved, is, is involved in their plan.
Yes, yes, and it, I think there is opportunity there, but we need to- Yeah, there's, there's a lot that needs to be-
It all works together.
So.
Let me hold up a second, you have two.
Chris Tillman, Georgia's on York. There is, there are, there are several pieces to that and as you were suggesting, sir, that the, you know, all that needs to work together. But in truth, what has to change first is the mindset and, and the law. If I had come in here, uh, and read that intent statement and, and sat down with the zoning book and read that intent statement, I may never have come here. Because that is the most business unfriendly thing you could ever write. You know, to, to say that the only thing we want downtown is services for the people who already live there, it's, it borders on being ridiculous. And, and it is the most no-growth thing you could, you could imagine. So, I think first that, that mindset and that that language has to change in order to be able to proceed with, whether, whether it's the Lions Club, uh, you know, whether it's the Tannery Barn, and I understand the issues with that, um, you know, and, and there's a lot of issues there. You know, or even something like I did. You know, if, if, if I were to come into town and I read that language, say, well, they don't want anybody coming into town, but why would I bring in a business that brings in what would be foot traffic to, to local businesses here in the town? And we've had our guests that have come in and walked around and said, oh, this is an adorable little town. I wish there was more to do here. And, you know, we could create that, you know, and, and, but like I said, the, the mindset has to change and, and the, uh, the desire to bring in the kind of businesses that bring in people from the outside has to change. Because the traffic is gonna be the traffic and the noise is the noise. And my bedroom faces out on York Street and I hear it every day. So, a few cars bringing people isn't gonna change that. You know, until they build a bypass and get the trucks off of these two streets, the noise and the traffic is gonna be the noise in the traffic. And frankly, if they did that, it would make the town a lot quieter and a lot better, but I digress on that. But that's, that's what I had wanted to bring up.
Thank you, Jim, you wanna?
Well, that's, um-
So, what, what's your intent or what, what are you proposing for us?
Right. I was hoping for some, some commentary as to what, what this board envisions downtown, what, what should downtown look like? You know, I, I think we've, we've talked about it off and on and I don't think that, um, you know, that we're, that this body is looking for anything different than what, for example, the Main Street Group is trying to achieve with, you know, bringing more businesses in and making the downtown a destination. But what's here in the code does not paint that same pretty picture that I think we're all trying to work towards. And, um, you know, I can, I can certainly try to cobble together some edits for you for next month. But, um, what I was hoping for was just some, some, some general idea. You know, are we, are we looking for downtown to be services that the people who live here need or something bigger than that? You know, do we want it to be, do we want to see that destination sort of approach?
All right, we'll see what you can put together for us and we'll, we'll go from there and I'm just ready to move off this particular subject.
Jim, may I submit to you something to consider for that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll send something over to you.
Yeah, please do. That's, and, and same for, for any of you. If you have any, any ideas or any thoughts that you would like to share, you know, if, you know, something comes to you a week from now, give me a call, shoot me an email. You know, I, I would really love to have some, some input and, um, you know, and I'll try to craft that into something for next month.
Great, all right.
One more.
Just one more, just a, a quick thing. You know, the, the Chamber of Commerce is in the process of reconstituting itself in a, in a much more energetic fashion. You know, there are four or five new businesses here in the downtown just in the past six, eight months, including ours. And, um, you know, we would like to know that if we're going to help lead a charge, that we're not charging into a brick wall, that, that we're charging together and not at each other.
Well, now you're-
I think, I think we're all on the same page here. It's, it's the end results that we're trying to get to, we're just having problems getting it.
Do you, you have a plan?
Not yet, uh-
Well, why don't the plans all come together?
And, and actually, I'm going to a Lions Club meeting tomorrow and, and hopefully I'll learn more about that.
There's a lot of work to be done down there too, you know?
Well, and, and there are, and there are, there's a multitude of things. I mean, we have, we have one York Street, we have the Sheets building, you have the creamery. And all of these things can be, and, and with the, with the brew pub, I mean, all of these things can be brought together to coordinate a plan and there's no reason that we can't. We just want to make sure that there are no, uh, roadblocks from a legislative standpoint that we would have to be stumbling over to get there. Uh, I mean, obviously, there's, there's codes and zoning requirements and those things are necessary things. And I'm not saying they shouldn't have those, but like I said, you don't want to, you don't want to be running up against an unfriendly, uh, code. You know what I mean? That isn't, that isn't, that has, that code, that code has a completely different vision from what the business community here sees.
All right, thank you. Jim, is that it for you then?
Yep.
Any other business that we need to bring? Any comments, anything from the floor? Not George?
No.
Bradley?
I have nothing, sir.
Ollie? Jim? Okay, then our guest, next meeting is October twenty, or, yeah, October the twenty-ninth. So, with that, I, then the other thing is, I think the mayor has selected and appointed, with the approval of council, Dale Hale, as a member of our commission. At this point in time, I think it's, I'm not sure what it is, but has-
It'll be approved this month, likely.
Okay.
If you threw the name out, they'll vote on it this month.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Everyone's in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Denominous, thank you.